Okay, good evening. This is the Eastline Board of Selectmen regular meeting of April 2nd, 2025, at the Eastline Town Hall Upper Meeting Room. We had just completed town meeting where we recited the Pledge of Allegiance, so we will move right into the agenda. Are there any additional agenda or consent calendar items that need to be added to the agenda this evening? I'm not aware of any. Anyone else? Okay. Next is public delegations. If there's someone that would like to address the board, the selectman?
Paul Mazzarco, 213 North Bribrook Road. As I said before, I've been to the police department four or five times. I spoke with the previous first selectman. The speeding on Bribrook Road is outrageous. There's cars that go 60, 70 miles an hour. They're passing cars in no passing zones. Something needs to be done. Whether they do more radar, they always have an excuse where there's, they're shorthanded or whatever, but something has to be done. There's people that, you know, ladies that walk their dogs and kids are riding bikes and somebody's going to get hurt. And like I say, the, they put a, one of those signs up with that, with the, but it's on the wrong side of the, of the town. It's on the Nyannick side where it's all curves. Where my place is, is a long straightaway. I don't know if that would deter it. I doubt it. But I've given them the times, mostly high school kids that are the worst, the times early in the morning and between 1:30 and 2:30 in the afternoon. And nothing's been done. This has gone on for years. And finally, I decided to come in and say something. I don't know if there's anything you can do or, something has to be done. Thank you.
I appreciate your comments. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Is there anyone else this evening that would like to address the Board of Selectmen? All right, next is approval of the minutes. First is the public hearing of March 19th, 2025. Do I hear a motion?
Move to approve the public hearing minutes of March 19th, 2025 as submitted.
Do I hear a second?
A second.
Thank you. Any discussion on the minutes? Public hearing minutes? Hearing none? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Anyone abstaining?
Abstain.
We have one abstention. Motion carries. Next is the, the minutes for the regular meeting of March 19th, 2025. Do I hear a motion?
Move to approve the regular meeting minutes of March 19th, 2025 as submitted.
Do I hear a second?
A second.
Thank you. All right. Any discussion on the regular meeting minutes? Any changes? I'm not aware of any. Being none? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions?
Abstain.
We have one abstention. Motion carries. Thank you. Next is the consent calendar. Do I hear a motion?
Move to approve the consent calendar for April 2nd, 2025 in the amount of $277.83.
Okay. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? Being none? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? Motion carries. All right, we now, we're going to turn our attention to new business. First is public works fees. And that, the first is to revise the fees charged to commercial refuse collectors pursuant to Section 5109 of the Eastline ordinances and to set the public hearing date. Do I hear a motion?
Move to approve the commercial waste fee to $79.94 per ton with an effective date of July 1st, 2025. And then what, the schedule of the public hearing?
I think we can do that as a separate motion.
Okay.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Okay, do we hear discussion? We have Mr. Bregaw here. Would you want to comment on that?
Yeah, Joe Bregaw, Director of Public Works. Just as a quick, just so, typically I come before the board and I've come to propose the, the commercial hauler fees and also the transfer station fees. The reason this is broken out is some of the transfer station fees, and there's actual landfill fees, are in town ordinances and some of that is outdated, like some of the fees were from like 20 years ago. So there is three ordinances. What's before you now is by ordinance, this board has the right to adjust the commercial refuse collector's fees without any kind of, any hiccups, public hearings or anything like that. So that's why this is in front of you. The reason this is becoming more an issue every year is the tip, the scarer tip fee for 14 years was flat and now it's starting to go up 11% a year because to catch up with everyone else in the state of what they're paying. So that's why it's so important to set it now because I need to have this in place by July 1st when our fees go up so that we're not playing catch-up and losing money on this. So that's the main, just I can let you guys, I'm assuming you might want to go one at a time and vote on this, but if there's any questions on the commercial haulers, I'd be glad to answer them.
Joe, what's the rate now?
The rate that we, the rate is 72.21 that we charge.
So you need to keep pace with the tipping fees on the other end?
Yes, or else we're going to be actually, when CWPM, who's really the only outfit out there, is picking up at all the commercial, but they're actually going to be, if we don't keep up with it, they're actually going to be getting charged less than what it costs us. So that makes no sense.
How many tons do you typically get?
It's about, about 4,000, there's 10,000 tons for the town of Eastline, 6,000's residential, about 4,000's commercial. The commercial's up about 40%. The reason it's up, it's not that the commercial's up, it's the fact that the decision that we made in front of this board as far as the new developments in town, the, the one up by Costco, Gateway, all that, this new Rockinac Village, we revised the, the ordinances for all that. And what we were, the big thing is, and we had a whole room full of people here from, from the different, some of the different 55 and older things, is that they were worried that we're going to take away garbage service on private roads. And what we came up with is we're not expanding the service. I'm really saying that because all these new developments in town that are coming in that are on private roads are now required to get their own dumpsters and their own service. That's why the commercial hauling fees is up 40%, but they're paying us for it. So it's not a cost to the town, it's a cost to those developments that came in after the fact. So fair is fair, the people that have been getting the garbage picked up for all these years, we didn't change their service, but it was very important of a decision by this town to not continue to grow that service because that would have cost us a lot more money. So I'm just bringing that up because the decisions of this board years ago is why we're here. So that's why it's up 40% and that $4,000 is not really a cost because we're, we're reimbursed for that money. If we, so long as we keep up with these fees and keep them above, because they're going up 11% a year, so that's why I want to be here. Last year, we were in front of you on July 5th. We didn't move the fees to August 1st, but we actually lost a little money in July because this got pushed to a later meeting and you can't just tell the collector, the hauler the next day we're changing the fee when they have commercial contracts with people. It's not fair. You've got to give them some notice. So if the board approves this, I'm going to be able to get a letter out right away that as of July 1st, you better tell your customers because it's going to go up to 79.
Thank you. Thank you, Joe.
Yep.
Any, any additional questions or concerns? All right. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? Being none? Motion carries. Next on the agenda, we need to set public hearing date to number, a letter A, consider revision of the transfer station fees pursuant to Section 5117 of the Eastline ordinances. And so that revision, and I think you have in your packet, the existing ordinance, fees for disposal of waste at the transfer station. The Board of Selectmen, this is what is currently the ordinance. The Board of Selectmen is a governing body that sets fees, sets the fee schedule at the town's transfer station on Roxbury Road. The Board of Selectmen can update that schedule at any time upon notice and hearing. The schedule of fees as of the effective date of the current version of the subchapters posted at the Roxbury Road Transfer Station and on the Public Works section of the town website. The revision, the proposed revision is to remove the language that says upon notice and a hearing. So the second sentence would read, "The Board of Selectmen can update that schedule at any time by a majority vote." So that is the change. And the final revision with the changes incorporated would read, "The Board of Selectmen is a governing body that sets the fee schedule at the town's transfer station on Roxbury Road. The Board of Selectmen can update that schedule at any time by a majority vote. The schedule of fees as of the effective date of the current version of the subchapter, subchapters posted at the Roxbury Road Transfer Station and on the Public Works section of the town website." So do we want to handle the motion, all in one motion correctly to do it, to it all? So let, let me go over the next part of this. It's to consider amending Section 5117, point 17 of the Eastline ordinances to remove the public hearing requirement. We just did that. And finally, consider the repeal of Section 51 dot 55 of the Eastline ordinance setting a fee schedule for disposal of refuse at the now-closed town landfill. So we no longer have a landfill that accepts a refuse. So that ordinance is superfluous, so it needs to be repealed.
Mr. Kunkka, can I say one thing?
Yes.
On these, as we remember that long debate about the leave contractor fees and so that, the nice thing about A is we're having a public hearing to discuss that very subject because it's in there. So everyone would have the thing. So that would cover an A. B, it's up to this board, but it might be a threshold of whether you need to have a public hearing and the cost of advertising and all that stuff every year, that's up to this board. But typically, like the commercial hauler fees, it would, it would be helpful to have the board choose that, but if they want to go, that's what the B. And C is just obvious, I mean, that was just a flaw in the town ordinance that said it still mentions a landfill that we haven't had for 30 years.
Right. So it's repeal an ordinance that no longer is relevant?
Correct.
Let's move. Okay. So do I hear a motion to set the public hearing?
Okay, so I can read all of it then?
Uh, yeah.
Okay. Notice is hereby given of a public hearing to be held by the Eastline Board of Selectmen at 7:00 PM on April 16th, 2025, at the Eastline Town Hall, 108 Pennsylvania Avenue, Nyannick, Connecticut, to consider the following. One, to revise the ordinance, Section 51.17 entitled, quote, "Fees for Disposal of Waste at the Transfer Station," to remove the public hearing requirement. Two, to revise the transfer station fees in accordance with the ordinance, Section 51.17, "Fees for Disposal of Waste at the Transfer Station," as proposed by the Director of Public Works. Three, to repeal the ordinance, Section 51.55 entitled, "Fees for Disposal of Waste at Landfill," because the landfill was closed and capped more than 30 years ago. Copies of the full text of the revised transfer station fees in the proposed ordinance revision are on file for public inspection at the office of the Eastline Town Clerk, 108 Pennsylvania Avenue, Nyannick, Connecticut, and at www.eeltownhall.com, to which reference may be had. Interested persons are invited to attend and be heard. Dated at Eastline, Connecticut, on the second day of April, 2025. Eastline Board of Selectmen.
Thank you. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Any additional discussion?
Yeah, I just had a question.
Yes.
So when you're saying that you're going to take out upon notice and hearing, does that mean that it wouldn't be put on like the Board of Selectmen agenda then?
No, it would be on the agenda. We wouldn't have to have a public hearing.
A public hearing, okay.
Yeah, we could, we could put it on the agenda.
So people could still come and talk?
Delegations, yes.
Okay, I just want to make sure that.
It just saves a set expense and additional process.
Yeah, understood.
Yeah.
Perfect, thank you.
Yep. Any other questions? If none, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Anyone abstaining? All right, motion carries. All right. Now for the, we've all been anticipating, tonight is the presentation of the short-term rental final report. So I invite, who's going to make the presentation?
We all will.
Oh, yes. Okay. Please, thank you.
Thank you. Hello, everyone. Ann Santoro here. I'm co-chair of the STR Short-Term Rental Committee here in town, and I just wanted to thank you on behalf of the committee for the opportunity to present our final report, the committee's final report and recommendations. As you recall, it was by you that our committee was created and following your charge to advise the board on the matter of short-term rentals in town, the committee engaged in, yes, 14 months, 14 months of research, analysis, discussion, and debate on this topic. The resulting final report, which I believe you have in a folder that looks like this and you have it in an online version, provides the town with, among other things, a balanced and reasoned and detailed blueprint for you all to use to address short-term rentals in our community. The committee has a lot to share with you and that we believe will be very helpful, so we'll get right to it. Just a word on format, tonight individual committee members will present various sections of the report, and they are here this evening. We have two members who unfortunately could not make it, but everyone else is here. And so they'll present, as I said, the sections of the report. Mr. Caccello, our other co-chair, has elected to, instead to summarize his individual thoughts from a document he's written. No other committee member has signed on to that document. We'll then conclude and questions and answers will follow. So if you have your report available, you can follow along because we're just going to try to keep this presentation to no more than an hour. There's a lot to go through, a lot of sections of the report, but we can start with Section 1. So if you want to have that available, you can, you know, pull it out and it's in the document that looks like this. Okay. So Section 1 is basically discusses the purpose and scope of this report, and your big takeaway there is just to understand that this report does not replace the status report that we, that we presented to you last year. That's the status report of April 2024. We presented it to you in May, I believe it was May 15th of last year. Basically, what this is, what this status, what this current report is, the final report, is an update and a supplement to the status report. And as you recall, that status report was kind of an opus that had lots of information, lots of issue spotting, you know, issue identification, and we were beginning to, just beginning to formulate recommendations. Meanwhile, the Connecticut Supreme Court was considering a case which was decided in July of 2024, the end of July. So we took a pause. And so that's why we decided to do that status report, give you as much as we could ahead of that Supreme Court decision. So the, the particular updates that you, that you have in, in this final report are about Webby, the Webby case, that, that Supreme Court case, legislation, state legislation that you need to be apprised of, and other local municipal developments. Very importantly, the, the scope of the report includes six key recommendations with very specific suggestions that can guide you to the formulation of a comprehensive policy. The challenge in all of this is that we, you know, that we faced at all times was to respect the legal landscape, differing viewpoints, competing interests, and policy principles. And my colleagues on the committee will delve into that to some extent tonight. So just think of the, think of the final report as volume two and the status report is volume one, and it's a good reference. So let's jump into Section 2 of the report, which begins for you on the bottom of page 1, about the Webby decision and its application. We discussed the facts of the case last time we met, you're probably familiar with it. What your takeaway here in this section is, what was that question before the Connecticut Supreme Court? What was the ruling of the court and why is it important to us here in Eastline? We don't have to become lawyers to, to comprehend the Webby decision. One could spend clearly hours discussing it. So I'm giving you a, you know, we'll call it the, I don't know, the mini version of it all. So as you probably remember, Mr. Webby owned property in the Branfords Pine Orchard Association Beach Community, very similar to what we have here. And under the, in 2018, the, the association decided to ban short-term rentals. Under the 1994 zoning regulations that he was operating a, a short-term rental, which he did not occupy, that wasn't his primary residence. Those regulations were silent, did not address short-term rentals. So the question became, and it wound its way through the courts, is was his use, a permitted use under those 1994 regulations? The court, in a word, said yes. Basically, the ruling is that under those 1994 regulations, time limitations not expressly stated for the rental of a single-family dwelling will not be inferred. Can't guess at it. It's got to be clearly stated. So that's the basic ruling. The minority opinion is very useful to look at because it really talks about the transient nature of short-term rentals, and when you read that, you, you tend to agree with a lot of what's in the minority view. The, this decision really highlighted, I think, the, and we've discussed this as a group as well and with attorneys of Markham, the, the decision really highlights the need, which was, and this was a need that the committee had already identified, to fill in the holes in our zoning regulations. So those holes being defining short-term rentals and other rentals and specifying their, their operations, clearly state any related regulation. The interesting thing is that Eastline's zoning regulations, as we discussed last time, are very, very close to, to the regulations under review in those 1994 regulations from Branford. At least to, at least to the extent that the, our regulations do not directly address short-term rentals, and so by the usual zoning theory, we don't allow them. That's the general, the general understanding there. So what, your, again, your takeaway, something that you should keep in mind, is Webby was really trying, I think, in a very awkward way, trying to get towns to update their zoning regulations and to recognize in some way either yea or nay or somewhere in between about short-term rentals. So that's, that's what you should keep in mind about that, without getting into the weeds and all, and all the nuance of it. You may hear from time to time, some attorneys who represent short-term rental owners say, well, Webby, you know, basically tells you that, you know, you really can't have any restrictions, you can't zone. This is not the case. In fact, the court was very clear that a town can, can have that path forward through zoning to promote stability in residential zones by zoning. So definitely zoning is, zoning for short-term rentals is appropriate, still appropriate under Webby. Just an interesting point, Mr. Webby succeeded at the Supreme Court level, but then when the, the aspect of the case that had to do with his pre-existing non-conforming use, got back to the zoning Board of Appeals of Pine Orchards, he lost. So basically, I don't know where things stand right now, but that matter, and Ann, Ann Thurlow will discuss the grandfathering issue. So he failed that grandfathering test and she'll, she'll discuss that pretty soon. So that's, that's Webby in a nutshell. So Webby is impactful. It's, it, you know, we would have probably taken the approach that we are taking in our final report even without the Webby decision, but it really gave us that extra push that, hmm, better do something about this. So probably also impactful in Section 3, and that would bring you to, let's see where we are. Section 3 is on page 3, the top of page 3 begins, and this section discusses Public Act 24143, and this is important in that the, the state legislature is beginning to grapple with the issue of short-term rentals, other than having an occupancy tax, which it's had for some years. So this is the first more major step, and this was, this was enacted in last, the last legislative session, authorizing municipalities to adopt an ordinance to license short-term rentals and to regulate their operation and use. A very, very tiny piece of legislation, no details. It's helpful, it's a tool in the toolbox, and I think that's how we can look at that. The definition of short-term rentals is consistent there as it is elsewhere in state law, and that's helpful for us going forward in zoning. The problem with this ordinance, and I discussed to some extent this legislation with Betsy Gara over at Conference of, not CCM, but Council of Small Towns, is that zoning is kind of ignored in this, in this legislation. It's not really addressed. How do these two things, you know, adopting an ordinance versus zoning, how do they, how do they relate to each other? And zoning has been the primary way that towns have, in fact, regulated short-term rentals, sometimes by itself, sometimes with, with combo of zoning and ordinance. So that's one problem. It sort of flies in the face of zoning. The second problem, and that's really important for us here in Eastline, is that we have three beach communities, and we've gone over this before, with their own zoning authority. Okay, that being Crescent Beach, Black Point, and Giant's Neck. So this would be a, this tool would have limitations unless you wanted to override zoning generally and, and the power of these three beach communities, their authority. A last point I'll, I'll talk about in this section, we review for you, as we did in the other report, pending legislation. There's a lot pending this session. One bill to really watch out for, it incorporates House Bill 5416. This was in your report, in the final report. House Bill 7238 is now what it is. So you can jot that down, 7238. There was just a public hearing on the 24th of March. I, I didn't participate in it, but I listened in on that public hearing, and it was very illuminating about short-term rentals. This piece of legislation seeks to create a statewide registry, very interesting, and that'll impact perhaps on one of our suggestions for our, for an ordinance here in town. And also importantly, to authorize local supplemental tax. So for municipalities to do that. So a cosponsor is Representative Bon Gardner of the 41st District. So this definitely was drafted with Southeast Connecticut in mind and, and communities like Mystic and so forth. So just something to keep, to keep in mind. So with that, I'm done with my sections, and I think, who's next? We have, great.
Ann, just a quick question on that House Bill 7238.
Yes.
That was just a discussion, correct?
It was, at this point, yeah, it's a raised bill at this point, and there was a public hearing. And so there were members, you know, from, there were all kinds of people, you know, putting their two cents in, but actually a limited number. It was, it was during a public hearing, which there were three bills unrelated to short-term rentals being discussed, but definitely there was, everyone who spoke was in favor of it.
Do you know, and I don't know if you know this, a timing of when they would like vote on this or like how this would?
Yeah. There's just a process of, you know, going through committees and, and, and more hearings. Paul Formica's here and he probably can. Paul Formica's here, and he probably can illuminate a little bit on that process. Once it's got out of this public hearing, what's a likely path for it. But it's pretty, you know, significant development, this idea of a statewide registry and this having a supplemental tax, so that towns can then take this money, perhaps put it towards affordable housing problems or other, as many things, and, you know, it's much more detailed, this particular piece of legislation, than the, the existing Public Act 24143. So.
Thank you.
Sure. All right. Let's see. Greg, you're up.
Thank you, Anne. Good evening. I'm Greg McIntyre, 1141 Shore Road. I've been asked to summarize Sections 4 and 5 for you. 4 is kind of a unique section, and it talks about the methodology that the committee used to reach this report. You're all experienced at this, and anytime you have a committee like ours, where you have a number of intelligent, accomplished adults who all have their own opinions, it's difficult to herd the cats. Anne and Gary did an excellent job, I think, running the commission for the last 14 months. Having said that, we started off with kind of individual efforts to gather information, you know, search the internet, talk to your friends, talk to Paul Formica, because he is a short-term rental owner, as well as a long-term rental owner. You gather information any way we could. And that was a good start, and I think that led to most of what was in the interim report. I will say that the chair people did an excellent job of going out and getting additional information, bringing it back to the commission, attending, I forget, what was the, it was a course or a seminar that Anne went to?
To Granicus.
Yeah, and, and talking to Granicus, which is a, a private concern that specializes in short-term rentals. It's in the report, the detail that they provided. But, but again, very, very good efforts by the chairs. And we also did a survey of the surrounding towns, and not only surrounding towns, but the area and the country. And in fact, there are times when there was information about short-term rentals from outside the country. So all of this was, was pulled together. So how was the synthesis of this committee report accomplished? Again, we had many individual discussions, many discussions at several meetings, many meetings, but before, we had public hearings, multiple public hearings. We came to a point where I think it seemed that we were going in different directions. All the individuals were just kind of confused and going off and finding new information every time we met. And I think Gary Chichello came up with, okay, let's just start at the beginning. There's two fundamental questions. Do we think short-term rentals are good, or do we think short-term rentals are bad? And so, as was our habit, the outcome of those two questions was not clear. And so we, we tried to go forward. I will single out Gary Ferruja, who came to us with an idea, and he said, here's a bunch of spreadsheets, and I have listed the items that we've talked about, and you get to rank them, you know, 1, 3, 5, and I'll take them all home and summarize what everybody did. And that really was the breakthrough, I think, that allowed us to get to the consensus report that we have here tonight. So, well done, Gary. I think that was really what we needed to push us through. There were fundamental ideas on there, you know, do we think short-term rentals are good? Do we think they should be regulated? Do we think they should be for seven days? Do we think they, they should be for 30 days? Do we think they should be for overnight? You know, all of those things were asked and, and answered, right? This really was kind of revealing to the committee ourselves, that these are the things that we had been discussing. We hadn't really brought them into that kind of a clarity before that. So in essence, that's where all this information came from. I would add, in closing on this section, that this is a majority opinion, that there were minority opinions that were not necessarily on board with what's in the report. And I think in the report itself, we're sensitive to those opinions, and they are given, you know, air, so to speak. So I can stop there, if there are any questions about the methodology. Yeah, it's really not like algebra. I mean, it wasn't, you know, A plus B equals C. It was, it was pretty messy at times, but it, but it got there, okay? Okay, so moving on to Section 5. Section 5 starts with the first of our recommendations to the commission, which is, allow short-term rentals, but limit their growth, which sort of sounds counterintuitive, but, but anyway, that's what it is. And I would say that, in my, with my liberal arts education, what I said was that, albeit not addressed in current zoning regulations, short-term rentals are a time-honored practice in East Line. I mean, I think we all know somebody who either has done a short-term rental, or is doing a short-term rental, or actually was the renter. Case in point would be myself. I mean, we, we actually were renters, get a short-term rental, two weeks, and then we got a property of our own. We have not rented it yet. If I can ever get my wife out of the house for more than five days, I might rent it, but we'll, we'll see, you know? So the fact is, and we've talked about this in our commission many times, is short-term rentals, whether not expressly permitted in our current zoning regulations, have been and continue to be ongoing in East Line. And not just a little bit, a lot. Academic rentals, one-month rentals, Black Point has a, what do you call it, their, their bylaws limit their, their rentals to seven days minimum. They seem to be happy with, with that and are able to enforce it. My own opinion is it would be difficult, if not impossible, to ban short-term rentals at this point in East Line. There've just been so many people who've done it and are doing it and depend on it. We've got that information from our public hearings. There are people who have a family home they inherited, and they said they can't afford to keep it if they don't rent it, you know, they need the income. So there's all kinds of reasons why it's out there. So how do we do that? How do we allow them, but limit their growth? Well, first off, we allow them by defining them, as Anne mentioned. That has to either be in zoning regulations, or in an ordinance, or somehow defining what we mean when we talk about short-term rentals, or just rentals. The second one is, how do you limit their growth? And this is hard for me, because I'm not at all sure that I like that concept, but some towns have done a cap. They said, we're only going to have 5% or 1% or 3% of our single-family homes be permitted to be short-term rentals. We can, I think that's in the report and is talked about. That's fairly common, actually. Another approach is to have one permit per owner, which would say that, let's say you come into Crescent Beach and you buy up five homes, you can only do short-term rentals on one of them. So the other four would have to be, somebody lives there, or sell them, or whatever you're going to do. But, but anyway, that's the, that's the push there. And that would apply to corporations, you know, there are multiple ways that people would try to get around that, and you'd have to be diligent to enforce that. You could require the owner to be resident in the house when they're doing a short-term rental, sort of along the lines of a, a bed and breakfast, but without the food. And as I'm sure you understand, you know, East Line does allow bed and breakfasts. We do issue permits for those. I'm not quite sure how frequent those are, but they're out there, we have those. And the other way, of course, as Anne mentioned, is zoning regulations. By zoning, residential areas has no short-term rentals, and only having rentals in commercial areas or multi-use areas, or whatever the regulations might be. But at any rate, zoning is very powerful and can be used to control the growth of short-term rentals. And that is really all I have. If there are any questions, I'd be happy to answer them. Thank you for your time.
Thanks.
Hi. Good evening. Anne Thurlow, 80 Smith Street. I am Section 6, so briefly, of the three ways to regulate short-term rentals, as you all probably know, town ordinance, zoning regulations, or a combination of both. The majority of our commission favors a combination of both, with zoning the primary method of regulation. Unlike an ordinance, which would apply uniformly to the entire town, using zoning regs would allow the three beach communities who have their own zoning to continue making their own rules, and it also allows the town to limit the location of short-term rentals by zoning districts. As it was alluded to before, there was a range of opinions on our committee. From one end, short-term rentals should be allowed everywhere, you have a right to do whatever you want with your home, to the other end of the spectrum, partial ban, have them in business areas, mixed-use, commercial, even marine business, but not have them in residential areas. There were some comments in public hearing that people would think they need the right to be able to buy into a residential neighborhood and not have some out-of-town investment company buy the house next door and have an unsupervised hotel with a revolving door going on. So there, there's a range of opinions on that. The issues we tried to address, and these could be addressed either through zoning or ordinance, were noise, traffic, parking, trash, party houses, over occupancy, septic problems, risk of fire, building security, and as mentioned just now, maybe a minimum number of days to rent. Does the owner need to be in attendance when it's being rented? Are outdoor parties allowed, which ties into noise? Also, a way to contact the owner if there's a problem. One thing that should be noted, East Line has noise and parking ordinances. Some members felt that maybe these just needed to be enforced, we didn't need anything new. Some members felt that maybe you should add absolutely no on street parking. Some of the items the commission did agree on, there should be an occupancy limit. Two ways we talked about was just having a maximum occupancy, or look at the assessor's field card and maybe limit it per bedroom. We all agreed that minors should be prohibited from renting. We all agreed that fire and building inspection should be required. And as you've heard earlier, a clear definition in the zoning regulations of short-term rentals, long-term rentals, and academic rentals. We'd been using the state statutes of 30 days or less when talking about short-term rentals. We all agreed there should be a 24/7 contact information available. Again, we had different opinions on this as well. One member felt a simple registration would suffice. Other members favored a permitting process. That, if you did a permitting process, it could be an enforcement tool, you could take away the permit if they were a repeat offender. Just a few additional thoughts here. If you pass an ordinance, the board select one passes on that you know exactly what you're getting. If you decide it should come to zoning and be regulated through zoning regs, obviously you can suggest your opinions, but at that point, it would definitely be up to the zoning board, whoever is on it at that point, what they think should be done. And my final thought, any decisions may or may not warrant something as big as a referendum, but maybe consider some kind of town-wide survey, just to get as much, you know, transparency in people's opinion as possible on the subject. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Anne.
Good evening. Mr. First Selectman, members of the Board of Selectmen, I'm Paul Formica, from 11 South Lee Road. And as was mentioned by one of my colleagues earlier, I am a short-term rental owner. I also am a long-term rental owner and a commercial rental owner. So I bring to the, hopefully, the public during our last 14 months and to the members of the commission, a perspective of what's happening on the street and how this short-term rental, which we started to talk about, is beneficial or not to the community. I believe it's beneficial. I have a picture of me as a young boy vacationing in Seabrook, 60 some odd years ago, when we used to call these things vacation rentals. Now, with the proliferation of the internet and the advent of the epidemic that we had with COVID, drove everybody to online usage. And that, I think, has accelerated the use of rentals, both short and medium and long term. But our charge was to talk about short-term rentals. The committee in, in Section 7 talked about adoption of an ordinance. It was unanimous of our committee to have a registration through an ordinance that was mandatory for all short-term rental owners. The reason being that a lot of people, for reasons to protect their assets, form LLCs. There are also large corporations that in other areas have bought some of these houses to, to, to rent out as short-term rentals, and there was no way to really contact anybody. There was no, fire marshal needs somebody, the building inspector needs somebody, the police needs somebody, there was no way to contact them. So the ordinance that we've outlined, a recommendation in Section 7, makes registration mandatory with 24-hour contact information, name, address, phone number, email. We suggest the town clerk hold a database and keep track of it so it can be accessed also through emergency services. Some of the legislation that was talked about earlier was addressed, I think, by the assessor who came and said, there's really no opportunity for her to levy any taxes on short-term rentals different than a residential home and a residential neighborhood. That's something that we expect we'll see on a, on a legislative process. And, and the bill process, to your question previously, is bills are raised in committee or not. If they are raised in committee, they are discussed. If they are given a public hearing, in order to be passed by either House of the, of the legislature, they have to have a public hearing on record. Of course, there's ways to get around that, but they have to have a public hearing. Once that goes, the public hearing, then it's either voted by the committee to move forward, to, to vote for the Senate or the House, or kill the bill in committee. So once the deadline for that process ends, usually around this week, the last week in March, and then the legislature begins to settle. If it's a Senate bill, it will start in the Senate. You could tell by it says SB, I think, 667 is one of the ones we talked about, or HB, which is House Bill. They get voted on first. If there's, if it's amended, it goes to the Senate for a vote and then comes back for a vote on the amendment, so. And then it goes to the governor for signature if it gets by all those. So that could go right to the very end of the legislative session. So there's no way of knowing, these three bills, I would, I would guess that they would be combined if they're going to go forward and there'll be one bill, or it may get tucked in another housing bill. So exit, I'm sorry, Section 7 talks about the ordinance, and it also indicates a need for a fire marshal's safety inspection. It's typically not done, it's not called for at this point in time in our legislation. I did have the fire marshal and the assistant fire marshal come out to my short-term rental and just go through the process and let me know what you're looking for, and I shared that information with the committee and consequently to the public. It also talked about permits. There was a lot of talk about having a zoning permit, and the reason is zoning handles land use. This is, this is a land use, so we felt that both ordinance and zoning need to be I did have the fire marshal and the assistant fire marshal come out to my short-term rental and just go through the process and let me know what you're looking for. And I shared that information with the committee and consequently to the public. It also talked about permits. There was a lot of talk about having a zoning permit, and the reason is zoning handles land use. This is a land use, so we felt that both ordinance and zoning need to be addressed. I was the one who was referred to earlier as being against a permit for the zoning committee. We don't have permits for long-term rentals, or academic rentals, or some commercial rentals. So, it seemed to me we needed to be uniform in that. When we looked up, and the reason we started talking about long-term rentals is when we looked up short-term rentals in the regulations, we found that neither short-term rentals, long-term rentals, or academic rentals are mentioned in the zoning regulations. And zoning regulations, as you know, are permissive, which means if it doesn't say something, it's not allowed. So, that created a conversation that most of my committee members didn't like for some period of time there, but we talked about it. So, zoning needs to be addressed. They have to address the definition of long-term rentals because we can't do away with that. And I think it has to address the short-term rental as a definition. So, my disagreement comes with no need for a permit. I think the registration that we talked about above does whatever it is we need to get accomplished for this. And then just add definitions in certain sections, in Section 3, 4, 5, 6, and 7, and the definition page in zoning might be adequate to cover what we need to cover in zoning. I don't think they need to oversee another permit. Section 8 talks about beach communities. You've heard mentioned that East Lime has a zoning commission which oversees majority of the community, but the three beach associations have their own zoning. And I think most likely that goes back to the fact that we've had vacation rentals for 100 years, generations from Cos Cob up to Stonington, right? So, it's not just East Lime. The question is, and what we've suggested the town council needs to weigh in on, is what happens if the town passes a zoning regulation? The beaches with their own regulations wouldn't be affected by that, but everybody else will. Currently, many of the associations have bylaws or regulations, rules. Pine Grove, for example, doesn't allow short-term rentals or any rentals under 30 days. And they seem to be able to regulate that just through their rules. There are bylaws at Giant's Neck Heights, they permit rentals, there are no minimum or maximum, and Old Black Point, and, as I said, Pine Grove are 30 days. So, we need, and I think the community needs, to understand what is required and can they enforce their own regulations for short-term rentals without having their own zoning authority? And there are also, finally, we talked about deed-restricted properties, which might be private associations, condominiums, et cetera, who might have their own opportunities to require or not. So, that's Section 7 or 8. And 8, which was my charge, I would like to just add one thing. As my experience with short-term rentals, there have been some problem that everybody hears about. We've had a number of houses, one, two, or three, that were problems we heard at our public hearings, but the vast majority approve of short-term rentals. I have not had any personal problems. I have seen people with, coming for graduations for the colleges we have locally, the high school, they want to stay for three days, weddings, three, four, five, seven days. People that have lived here and come back, want to return and reconnect. Vacations, obviously, seven to 14 days. And I've also had some longer term, people that come in to work, and they're assigned for working a corporation here for two months. And they don't want to stay in, you know, a local motel because they're living every day and going to work. So, short-term rentals provide them an opportunity to do that. So, I appreciate the opportunity to be part of this committee, and I appreciate the opportunity to present to you this evening. Thank you.
The title of Section 9 is prior use. However, the essence is more like get good legal counsel. The committee discussed how to address short-term rental operations in existence before adopting new regulations, either through zoning or an ordinance. These are considered, as you know, a non-conforming pre-existing use or grandfathering, in which the applicant would be required to show evidence that they had previously rented out the house. However, since our zoning regulations are written in a permissive style and short-term rentals are not listed as a permitted use, one point of view is, then there would be, they never were permitted and there's nothing to grandfather. However, after the Whoopee case, it was the opinion of our then-town attorney that because we have allowed real estate for rent signs in front yards, we're the town, everyone is free to operate rentals, no matter what the length. However, not all attorneys agree with that interpretation. So, basically, any questions you have on this section, I refer you to one of the attorneys on our committee. Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Gary Ferruja, 31 Saunders Drive, Niantic. And I'm doing Section 10 and Section 11. Section 10 talks about enforcement. As was mentioned earlier, we heard from the Granicus Consulting Firm, and they provided us with a bounty of facts and figures regarding short-term rentals. Among the information was one discouraging data point. Granicus estimates that, on average, only 10% of STR landlords comply with mandates to obtain a permit. The level of compliance East Lime achieves will be directly related to the level of enforcement the town applies to regulating short-term rentals. Our committee recommends STR permits, and the committee did recommend permits, not registration. STR permits as an effective tool for enforcing the zoning regulations. Permits can be revoked or denied to landlords who ignore regulations regarding noise, parking, or occupancy. We all agreed that short-term rental enforcement should be strong, workable, and financially feasible. However, we were unable to obtain a majority opinion regarding that specific level of enforcement. We looked at three different levels of enforcement, and the committee was pretty evenly divided along these three. There was a minimal enforcement, which is a model that the neighboring town of Lime has. They don't require a safety inspection, although they encourage it. There's no monitoring or enforcement procedures in place, and they have a nominal permit fee of $25. A moderate enforcement, this is practiced in Preston and in Simsbury, has a mandatory safety inspection, part-time clerical help in zoning to administer the permitting process. The zoning commission adjudicates complaints from residents about noise, or parking, or traffic. And the permit fees range from $100 to $200. And then, there's a more robust enforcement, and this is practiced in Basra and in Legerd. Mandatory and safety inspection from the fire department. They have a full-time zoning enforcement officer, and that person reviews and approves the permits, monitors STR social media apps like Airbnb or VRBO for permit compliance. So, they're looking at who's advertising rentals and whether or not those people have permits in the town. The zoning enforcement officer investigates non-compliance complaints of regulations or permits, and has the authority to void the permits for non-compliance or reject renewals. And fees for those more robust enforcements go from $250 on up. I should say that our fire department charges about $65 for the safety inspection, so that would be a fee that would have to be factored in on this as well. I was among the minority who favored a robust approach. The permit process mandates, that mandates safety inspections, an annual renewal, and administrative enforcement helps preserve the character of our neighborhoods. And in the public opinions that we were hearing, in the hearings, that was a real big concern of preserving the quality of the neighborhoods. Enforced zoning regulations will give STR landlords clear compliance accountability. That's it for Section 10. Any questions on that? All right. Then, very briefly, on Section 11, the committee recommends that both the zoning commission and the Board of Selectmen have a statement of purpose. And in our deliberations, in fact, on the summary page, which is Page 2 of the report, the note begins with the committee's final report. It explains the approach our committee took. And what we tried to do is to seek a balance of the competing property rights interests that this issue raises. We were determined to have the rights of the homeowners preserved, to preserve the tranquility and quality of life in their neighborhoods, and we wanted to balance that with the rights of homeowners to lease out their dwellings for rent. That approach became our statement of purpose. It became our mission statement. And we recommend that both the Selectmen and the zoning commission also have a statement of purpose. And I would point to the town of Lime, who I think provided an excellent example in their zoning regulations. Thank you.
Hello, Gary Chikillo here, 11 Village Drive, East Lime. So, I have some prepared remarks, but I feel like putting my attorney hat on and kind of getting into the mix of things that I just heard, but I'll stick to my prepared remarks. I filed a dissenting document. I found, I learned that dissent is uncomfortable. Believe me on that. It's uncomfortable for the majority because their views get challenged. It's uncomfortable for the dissenter because no one likes a troublemaker. And it's uncomfortable for the decision-maker because you have to deal with the tension, I guess, that I'm expected to bring, but I'll try not to. So, why can one person get up here and disagree with the majority position? And I'm talking about dissent, not so much for you folks, you probably deal with it all the time, but we do need to make a record so that later on, if there's ever any issues with this process, there's a record for it. So, we have what's called a right to free speech. And that right is designed to protect political disagreement and dissent. Some people might go so far and say that that might be a bedrock of our democracy. Some people, on the other hand, may roll their eyes about such talk. But I trust that this bedrock of dissent is still relevant today. Now, I did have a book, I brought it with me, and I got this line from it, is, "Not only is an individual's right to dissent protected, but also protected are the people who benefit from that courage or foolhardiness of the dissenter." That's me. So, why dissent in public if it's so uncomfortable? And again, I got this from a book, it's not from me. Because of a diversity of ideas, open discussion, and dissent help us solve society's problems. Because dissent increases information available to decision-makers, and it makes more likely that serious issues will be addressed. And that is why that is worth some individual discomfort. Now, for this particular dissent on this committee's report, the easy way out of this would have been just to agree with the majority. And tonight, Wednesday night, I would be at Bench Club with my lifting partners, and I wouldn't have to be addressing you. But instead, I'm here tonight disagreeing with a group of intelligent people. And I again ask, and I question myself, is that courage or foolhardiness? But remember this one thing, I am not here, and I did not put any recommendations in my report. I'm not here to persuade you on anything. I'm not trying to convince you whether short-term rentals are good or bad. That's not why I'm here. My main goal is to prevent information in a clear manner so that you can make an informed decision on this issue, and that's it. This dissent that I wrote is sort of a roadmap to get you from point A, not knowing anything about short-term rentals, to point B, to being able to make a decision about short-term rentals for the future of East Lime. But there's a little preparation on this roadmap. The first thing you have to do is get rid of any predetermined positions you have about short-term rentals. In order to properly participate in a deliberative process, you have to come in there with no bias about what you should be doing with short-term rentals. Now, the first stop on this roadmap is understanding what the people of East Lime are experiencing. So, I started my document with a description of what the people of East Lime, and people in general, I did a lot of research on this, what they considered the issues and their experiences with short-term rentals. So, those sections, that's what they do. They present the issues and the sentiment of people who deal with short-term rentals, renters and short-term rental owners. Now, after you consider what the, and I'm not going to go through it in detail, you can read it, after we consider what the people say, because number one, this is what it's about. It's about the people of East Lime. And you folks seem to be in a good position to have a finger on the pulse of what the people of East Lime are looking for. You go through the budget, you spend $100 million a year on the town of East Lime. So, you go through all the committees, you attend all these meetings. I do not have the pulse of East Lime. I just don't. I'm here for a couple of years on this one thing. You folks, that's all you do, you devote all your time to that. So, you're the ones who have that, who are in that unique position to know what the So you're the ones who have that, who are in that unique position to know what the people of East Line are looking for. Now, after the people, we're going to, this, this roadmap is going to take you to the Supreme Court in Connecticut. So we look at WIBBIE. I wrote my, I wrote my rendition of what WIBBIE, what happened in WIBBIE, you can read that, it's pretty straightforward. And WIBBIE basically came out and said, and I agree with Ann, she basically came out and said, "Towns, you better be careful about how you write your laws and how you write your zoning laws. If you want to do something, say it and just write it clearly. Just write what you want to happen." So that's kind of what the Supreme Court said. So after the court, we leave the court and we're headed back to town to look at what our zoning laws are, what our zoning laws and ordinances are. Before WIBBIE, no short-term rentals less than 30 days was allowed in East Line. Our town attorney, that's what he told us, you pay him to know these things, and he tells us this. East Line did not allow short-term rentals less than 30 days in East Line. The fact that all of these people in, in East Line were not complying with that doesn't make it right and doesn't make short-term rentals lawful at that time. So prior to WIBBIE, no short-term rentals were allowed for less than 30 days. After WIBBIE, immediately after WIBBIE, our town attorney, what did he say? He came in and said, "Looks like the Town of East Line is open for business for short-term rentals." However, now that the dust has settled after WIBBIE, and after lawyers have read this case, you, and I'm no zoning, I'm not here as, as an attorney, but after you read that case and you ask the town attorney again, does WIBBIE really stand for what you thought it said? Does it truly open up the town to short-term rentals? This is not a belief I have, this is a legal question that you need to get an answer from the attorney from. That, that's it. Either it's yes or no. That's it. That's, that's an answer. So if it's yes, then you could do short-term rentals. If it's no, then maybe you have to change something if you choose to change it. And we'll get to that. So, so WIBBIE, we're not really sure. You have to ask the town attorney. Don't ask me. So what do we do? My doc, my document then takes you into a deep dive into the soul of East Line. The two competing things that we're looking at here is do we preserve the character of the town? Do we preserve that peaceful living in town versus a person's right to use the property as they see fit? Kind of seems the language that's, that's been thrown around. That's an issue for you folks. I'm not going to tell you how to decide that issue. You folks, that's, you're elected officials to do that. We're just a group of people here, not elected to make that decision. Now, our roadmap then takes us to the IRS. In researching this, in researching for this dissent, I was looking up caps. Because at one time when I looked up caps, I said, "Man, the courts around the country are saying caps are no good." So that was a year or so ago. I said, "Well, let me see what new cases there are about caps." I'm a pretty good researcher. Not one case came, not one query came up about caps. They all came up about a short-term rental tax loophole. The committee never heard of this. I never heard of this. It was never discussed. We had people come in front of us in public, public hearings, public delegations, no one ever brought it up. We have a short-term rental owner on the, on the committee. It was not brought up. I have no idea if he knows it. I, I just, I never asked him. But this is an issue that came up, and it's a pretty important issue because this particular loophole says it changes, it changes income from a short-term rental from passive to active so that those income and losses can now be used to offset a person's active income in their job. So I'm not a tax guy. I hate them. I just sign them with my eyes closed, Ann writes a check, and that's it. So I have no idea if this is legit or not. You have to ask your town attorney, "Hey, what's this guy talking about, this, this tax loophole?" I attached some, some documents in there, exhibits about this thing. However, this is an important issue because the point is, if this indeed changes a short-term rental from passive to active, does it also change it to a commercial activity in a single-family residential neighborhood? That's a big problem. And, and I put a lot of options in here for you folks, and I think if you look at all the options, you still have to then apply this short-term rental loophole answer, answer, not speculation from me. This is, I'm just, I, I entitle this hogwash, okay? Because I'm not an expert on this. I'm just putting these issues out for the attorney to give you an answer about it. But that tax loophole can be very problematic in making a decision. So just research that issue. Now, the roadmap next takes us, where does it take us? It takes us back to town. So we leave the IRS, we come home, and we take a little ride around our surrounding neighborhoods. Now, I found a document, it's an exhibit in here where people, this company, it's a rental company, they actually researched East Line, and they said, "Hey, you know something?" It's like a 10-page document. Said, "East Line is a very short-term rental friendly town in this area." And that's fine if that's what you folks, if that's where your values of the town lead us. However, the, the point is, if we are considered short-term rental friendly, then there may be a greater proliferation of short-term rentals in our town. The Granicus report that Ann Santoro keeps referring to did make a comment that short-term rentals are increasing by 15% year-on-end. Okay? So if we then say, based upon these investors identifying our town as friendly to short-term rentals, we need to ask, is that going to cause a greater proliferation? I don't have an answer for that. But it's an issue you need to consider. So then we have to get back from our little ride around town, around the neighboring towns, and we need to look at our town. And this is, this is the specific question, folks, is what are the values of our town? Because again, you need to figure out what the values of our town is so that, so that you can make these decisions. We also need to determine, how do we do this? Townwide ordinance or zoning rights? What's better? Or a combination? Townwide ordinance, our town attorney told us repeatedly that a town-wide ordinance makes one solution for the town. In his judgment? That's fine, if that's what you want to do. The committee, on the other hand, is suggesting, and I'm not saying I disagree, but I'm just saying you need to consider it. It could be a fine result, but what they're suggesting is that we need a combination of ordinances, changes to our, our town zoning regulations, we need to allow the three beach communities to have their own positions on short-term rentals. We also need to factor in the bylaws of any other beach community. We need to consider restrictive covenants of any other properties. So that's a lot of entities that may disagree or have an own opinion on how they want to deal with short-term rentals, and then we need to put that together into some workable That would have to be done by regulation and by enforcement. So our town attorney did not think that was a good method. He thought a town-wide ordinance covering the whole town was better than a, multiple entities having their own positions. So I give a lot of, I, I then give a lot of options, and the options are from, you can read them, they go into a lot of detail. The options go from total ban to total allowance of short-term rentals to many things in between. Read those, but you have to, first, before you, before you make any conclusion on which one to choose, you have to apply the town's values to those. And I think once you do that, and then after you get answers to all my, all of these questions in here, this is a necessity, the attorney, there's a lot of questions, probably more than these do, once the attorney gives answers to these questions, then you can apply, then you can apply the town's values to these, and then you folks can make the decision. Without getting input from the town attorney on many of these questions, you cannot finish this deliberation. And it goes for the, for the committee's report also. You know, they presented as, you know, they did say that there's some issues here and there, but it's not as, their, their suggestions are not as well-founded in the law as you would think, meaning they're not unlawful, they're, they're similar to mine, they're exactly the same, because they have to have these questions answered. So I, I'm not denigrating that, I'm just saying, all of these suggestions have to be run by the attorney. And Ann Santoro told me that because this is not what I do. She's excellent, she knows the process, not me. So, so basically, I don't tell you how to do a job, but I'm telling you how to do your job. So basically, this is a roadmap, go through this process or another process, I don't care what process, just go through a process so that people cannot come before you like they come before us and say, "Hey, you know something? At the last, at the last public delegation we had, young man came up, attorney, he read the, he read the report, draft report, and he said, 'You know something? This whole report is, is, is capricious, arbitrary and capricious.'" That's what he said. You don't want anything, any law to be arbitrary and capricious, because it's going to be knocked down in any court. You do not want that. So I'm a person, because I'm a very visual learner, and the only reason I found their, their brief unclear is because my head isn't, works in a visual way, and their paper didn't comport with my visual requirements. So I was offended by the visuality, if you will, of, of the report, really, literally. I figured that out.
But it's so clear in my head.
No, no. But I figured that out today. I said, "Why isn't offending me so much visceral reaction to the report?" And they'll agree, I had a visceral reaction to it, and it's, my head doesn't like the visuality of it. Period. That's it. I need things in a particular order, in a particular process, and if you don't follow a process, you're going to have an arbitrary and capricious result, and that's not going to be good for the town because Ann is always worried about spending money, you're going to be spending money on attorneys, Zamarca's going to love it, well, he's retired, he'll come out of retirement. It's not going to be good. Arbitrary and capricious is not good. And people, lawyers are already looking at this stuff, saying, "We're going to contest everything." So we need a bulletproof position, literally a bulletproof position. And, and you need to go through the deliberative process to do that. And that's all I can ask is make an informed decision. You will win in court if you do that. And, because you're going to have problems. Thank you.
Thanks, Gary.
Thank you.
What I'd like to do now to wrap up is just ask any of the members if they have information that they would like to convey or other final points to make before we open up to question and answers. So anyone, anyone have anything? Nothing here. I have a couple of things just before we get to Q and A. So on the, just want to mention on the matter of surveys, Waterford has done a survey. I've been trying to find out where they are with that, and I haven't gotten information back. But when that information does come, I will definitely share that with you so that you can see the value in it or we can get some, some feedback from, from that town. A couple of things.
What was that survey about?
The survey was about short-term rentals in their town. For a while, it was posted on their website, you know, you could just fill out whatever form that, you know, so whatever link they gave you. But the person in charge of that hasn't gotten back to me because I was, enough times passed now that I don't see that survey up on the website anymore. So that would be something to think about as you're trying to gather more information. However, we have had three public hearings. Most recently was just a couple of weeks ago, in accordance with our charge. We've had so much in public delegations from, at every single meeting. So there's a wealth of information. And if, I can remember, you know, remember to remind you, we have a web page on the town website. All of this stuff is there, every possible detail that you might need, I would have to say, is there. Just quickly, a couple of other items. Let's see. On grandfathering, just wanted to mention the test for grandfathering. That has to do with one's intention and one's continuity. So, but there is this interesting question that WIBBIE does, does raise. Let's see. Other, I guess a major point I would like to make is that one of our, Greg, I think it was you, Greg, where are you? You, you mentioned that short-term, this whole issue is a moving target. And to that point, I just would like to give this advice if I could. We have to follow and keep apprised of legislative developments, developments in other, in our neighboring communities, the approaches and experiences of these towns. There's a wealth of information in the first report on what's been happening, and Section 5 of this report goes, you know, brings you up to speed on some very interesting developments that you would want to know about, especially as concerns protecting the residential character of neighborhoods, Town of Preston, Town of Groton, and, and other towns as well, Lime, et cetera. So the examples that we, that we have gotten and the research there, I think is invaluable. You know, you're not going to reinvent the wheel. Other towns have grappled with the same issue, regardless of the nature of each town and where they're located, you know, they're more beach-like, they're less, they're more woodland, whatever, the, the issues which we're discussing in that first report are the same for each and every town. They're, they'll take a little different approach, but, so, so that's, that's something that, you know, in, in your process of dealing with this is very important. I just wanted to say that we had minority views, as you could, as you heard this evening, even putting together this approach, this, this one approach in this final report, we had minority views, those are made clear in the report. So there's no guessing, you know, where we felt we had consensus, majority view, all that's in there. So, you know, and it, and we, and... So, you know, and it, and we, and to Gary's point, I don't think we were, at times it was uncomfortable when we all had to, you know, get to, get, get to resolution, it's never easy to get to resolution, especially when you have a, you know, something as vast as this. But, you know, we, we got past it, and we, and we put something together for you that we think will be useful. On attorney review, very important, we had attorney help up until the fall period of time, which Attorney Zomarka, you know, is retired or semi-retired, so we got the guts of what we needed, you know. There's the, again, as Paul mentioned, that very question that we need to figure out about the five beach communities out of eight that do not have zoning authority. What is that, what are they all about? Mr. Zomarka answered it briefly for us at one point, but, but we still needed to do more research, and that will be down, down the pike. Just two other points. This report really creates a system for you, one example, one approach, and there's lots of rationale in it, it's woven throughout. A lot of the analysis of issues and questions and approaches, you'll find in the first report in volume one. About caps, just wanted to say, it's very interesting, we were warned about caps, but recent, recent opinions, court opinions, for example, out in Palm Springs, in Colorado, elsewhere, I think it's mentioned in the report, you know, are in favor of these caps, to use them as a way to limit STRs. So this is an interesting development. We haven't, as the report says, we haven't found that in, we haven't found the use of a cap yet in Connecticut, but it is one approach. And that's basically, that's basically it. It's interesting, I saw in the Airbnb platform info that you provided, Gary and I are mentioned as contact people in case someone, so, you know, and it's good, I'm glad that you posted that actually, or you, that you provided that, Gary, just a word of advice, I've seen many of these, you know, and they are just kind of meant to be helpful to the short-term rental owner, they tend to be generic unless there's an outright ban. They'll be very, very generic, and they'll, they'll walk you through the questions you need to ask, you know, as a short-term rental owner. So they kind of look the same. That's about it from me. Anyone else think of anything, last minute thing? Okay, so we'll open up to questions, and if our way and any one of us can answer as, as we can.
Thank you, Anne.
Well, Lita, I spent a lot of time reviewing all of the documents. My early decision I made was to never go out to dinner with Whippy. I was so sick of hearing about him. But I waded through. So a couple of things from that, those multitudinous pages struck, struck me. The pulse of zoning regulations is to foster stability and permanence, be compatible with long-term property rentals, because long-term inhabitants have the opportunity to develop a sense of community and a shared sense of community. And I think that that is a number one goal, a sense of community, getting involved, being part of the community. And you don't get that from people who are in and out, unless, of course, they happen to come every year. But several other things struck me as, as questions, thoughts. Do people who have short-term rentals, do they have a big advantage over people who have to follow hotel and motel rude, rules? As we, if we expand and allow the continued use or increased usage of short-term rentals, does this kind of eliminate any hope that we might have a hotel or motel in town, which would be far more expensive, and certainly they would pay a heck of a lot more in taxes? Are these short-term rentals a business? Do they pay a business tax in town, which is different than what an individual homeowner, homeowner pays, I believe? The 30-day rental limit, as currently is proposed, can a person take a 30-day rental unit in one section of town, and then go to another section of town and rent for another 30 days? And then to go to another section in town and go stay another 30 days, they're making up the length of an entire school year, where your children can be in the Eastline school systems, because are they a resident of town? Something to consider. I think advertising is a big issue, do we want to see signs all over town? Zoning does have some regulation over signage, but I think that that sort of gives a different twist, if you're going to have a lot of these signs, kind of gives a different twist to a residential neighborhood versus a rental neighborhood. Again, my question of, is, would there, if they are not taxed as a business, is this a loss of tax revenue for us? On-site parking, I think that's a huge problem. I already see it in my neighborhood, where they own more cars, this particular dwelling, then they have space for, and therefore park on the side of the road. When I inquired about having the zoning enforcement officer come out, I was surprised to learn that we don't have any regulations for on-street parking in residential areas, they can park there as long as they want to. So I spent a lot of time with this, I didn't want to be prejudiced against it, and I still haven't made up my mind. In spite of all your information tonight, I still have not made up my mind. I'm pretty good at reading a roadmap, though, did a lot of traveling across the country, I'm pretty good at it. So I want, I want to go back and look at some other things that I'd highlighted. I didn't set out a clear set of notes, point after point after point, I rather made notes in the margin on various parts, so I really didn't have an organized presentation for tonight, but in part because I didn't want to really get myself locked into one particular position. I didn't think that that would be, that would be fair. So I'm always looking for more tax money, and the possibility that my taxes might be reduced as a result of that, so that's selfish, I suppose, but I think that there's, there's a lot here, and this is far more extensive than I thought we would ever be headed for when this committee was established. I commend you all for your diligence, and the amount of work that was put into this, and the number of opportunities that were given for the public to speak. I've got more reading to do, so I'm going to turn this over to Dan. I've got to get home and get started with the rest of my reading.
I'll wait till the end, oh, I left, will you go next, or?
Okay. So first, I just want to thank all of you, you've done an amazing job, huge amount of work, and I know how much work it is, I've been on other committees, and even wading through this, you know, it, it's a lot. I do have an open mind, I guess, you know, I'm always about the money, so I'm looking at this going, what is this going to cost the town? You know, I'm a little, I guess, I guess the best word would be overwhelmed, I feel like there's all this information, and I'm like, usually I can look at something and kind of get a grasp on it, and I, I feel like I'm kind of like, you know, I look at one thing, I'm like, oh, that kind of makes sense, and then you throw in everything else. So I can understand and agree and understand how you could say, some people agree with this, some people agree with that, because it's like that, you know what I mean? And there's so many different facets to it. It's something that, yeah, I think we do have to, I, I guess I look at it as first to determine, you know, there's a lot of questions, you say, for the attorney, so I think we have to figure those out first. And then my other really big concern, besides getting some questions answered, is, you know, there's certain, you know, House bills, Senate bills, so what I don't want to do is make some kind of decision as a board, you know, and then have it just kind of like taken away by a House bill, a Senate bill. So that's why I was asking about the timing of that, not that I, you know, you want to wait forever, but, you know, if this is hot now, and there's going to be a decision made, then you don't want to make something and then just have it, you know, taken away. So I think that, you know, I need to sit down and, you know, I did read through everything, I have, you know, I, I'm a big note taker and highlighter and questioning person, but I, I think that you guys really spelled out everything, and we need to sit down and, you know, first figure out what questions, what are the questions that we need to ask, and what are the answers that we need in order to even take the next steps forward? So that's, that's where I am on this. But again, I just want to thank you, because, you know, I think it was like 14 months you guys, you know, spent on this, and it's a lot of work, and you had a lot of input, and I think that's the most important part, you know? You got input from, you know, the fire chief, the police, the, you know, all different groups, and then you did all your own research, too. And as Anne Santoro said, you know, that's constantly changing, and there's more stuff coming in. So that's also something that, you know, we need to keep on top of. So just again, thank you.
Okay. Well, I would have to agree with Anne and Roseanne additionally, the amount of work that you all had done has been absolutely tremendous. My understanding is that we're not coming to any decision tonight, not that I think that we even could, right? Such a tremendous amount of information. However, you know, moving forward, I'm looking forward to possibly having some meetings together where we can go through this information, delineate it, have the opportunity to talk to our attorney, and really find the right fit for Eastline. That's, that's kind of where I, my, I'm looking at it, right? We want the right fit here. And I remember listening in the meetings, do we do nothing? What do we do? Because we can do nothing, right? Or moving forward, the steps that we can take to kind of lean into maybe putting some regulations in place that are going to help alleviate some of the issues that are happening here in Eastline, a little at a time, maybe, looking at the impact on the beach communities and how to do that. Also the legality. What we do is not going to be bulletproof, and we're going to need to be able to justify anything that we put in place, because just like every other municipality, we will be looked at and probably be sued for some of the things that we put in place. So I would like to have a specific meeting for this, that way we can go through the information together, step by step, to try and find the right fit here for Eastline.
Good evening. Like everybody said, once I saw the lineup, who's on this commission, it's like the hitting order of the Dodgers, holy cow, it's amazing. So I owed you to read this thing cover to cover, and make some notes and ask some questions. Nice job, really, really nice job to stay that focused for 14 months, it's crazy. Anne, I'm going to disagree with you, you always made a statement, you're going to do what's good for the Eastline, tonight you said it's about the dollars.
Well, it's always about Eastline, too.
There you go. All right. You don't have to answer this, but just think about some of the things, the points I'm making here. In the closing statements of Whippy versus Pine Orchard case, it states that zoning regs, this is to you, Gare, must be strictly construed and not extended by implication. So what does Eastline have currently in place regarding STRs? Don't, the horse has already left the barn, so we don't need an answer to that, but I'm just saying that we know the answer to that. In regards, in regards to this gentleman, I forgot his name.
Greg.
Greg. Possibility setting claps, caps, where, whether it be done town-wide or neighborhoods, can a homeowner simply buy a license to be short-term rental and not use it and hold it? Will that eat up one of the caps, one of the spots? Can, can, when he sells his house, can he transfer that? And the reason I asked that question is because I used to be in the liquor business, on the liquor store, and a small store was going out of business, so I bought his license. And I, I'm going to develop it, don't worry, and I kept it in the drawer, and, because I didn't want a huge big discounter coming in, Costco, whatever, just taking my legs out. So I held that license. So it's just something to think about caps, where I don't think caps would work, as far as a neighborhood. Our committee suggests that short-term rental be defined 30 days or less. What is less? That's not defined. A weekend? Why not make it 30 days and let's see how it works? Just my, my knee jerk. In your report, you list a ton of potential negatives, noise, this is to Anne Thurlow, traffic, parking, trash, parties, over occupancy, septic, what are the positives? Just a general question, I'm not, I'm not going to be direct with it, I'm just saying, so what are the positives?
You can take them.
Go ahead, Anne, if you want.
Like, if I understand your question.
So you were the one that listed all the negatives.
No, those, those were just things to be addressed. Like with noise, we already have a noise ordinance, the police chief at the time said we didn't have a noise meter, so it couldn't be enforced. And so, you know, it's a positive that we already have an ordinance, it's just maybe we can get it enforced. So, you know, not, not, not everything's a negative. You know, make parties aren't bad, but if the noise gets too high, then it's a negative. So I think there's positives and negatives to, you know, different items.
Thanks. Just making my points, after reading the things I said to me, that stuck out to me, that's all.
Yeah.
Mr. Cruzia, in the highlighted, the status report, less than 10% of the owners voluntarily pay all the fees right now, and I'm going to get into that in a second, thus not promising a statistic for any regulatory program at all, particularly one that, in the military, I was taught, inspect what you expect, and if you circumvent systems, you're going to get negative results. And I've kind of lived by that, and it's helped me quite a bit through my business career. Lastly, Mr. Nazarko, thanks for staying, adherence to the law. I'm going to use golf carts for an example. We have golf carts in Black Point, New Black Point, not Old Black Point, I'm not capable of getting to the white gate. The benchmark for adherence or lack of, it is estimated that, right now, 60% of every golf cart is not even registered. Now, there's really no way to tell that data, because you can't, they're not required to register with you, okay? But however, we had two various, two people during the Fourth of July parade, count how many golf carts were not registered. They have to have seat belts, they have to have brake lights, they have to have headlights. Anyway, there's, the police get a call about a 10-year-old driving a golf cart, because you have to, you have to have a driver's license. They don't respond, because it's not a priority. And I'm not just saying that because I'm guessing, I just, I just know, they don't respond. So there's no enforcement. So how are we going to enforce this? This is going to take labor, this is going to take people, it's going to take a constable, I think our chief police can, can actually appoint a deputy if you're able to enforce some of this stuff. It's got to have teeth. If you're going to do this, which I think we are, it's got to be adhered to, and then it'd be a good place to live, where you respect the people that live here all year round, and do the right things. Candace just mentioned lawsuits. In Black Point, you cannot park on the roads there, because if you do, emergency vehicles cannot get up the street. There's your lawsuit. Somebody's house burns down, or somebody gets hurt because they had, the fire trucks had to go around the other way. You can, literally, many of these streets, you can't get by up there, so you can't circumvent the systems. Again, that's, that's just my, all my stuff that I've taken from this so far, I think the horse has already left the barn, like, as I said, and I'm, I'm okay with that, but we've got to comply. Mr. Nazarko, I'm going to go to the police station tomorrow, on your behalf, okay? But I'm just saying to you that, I, I really think it's important, that if this happens, it cannot be, look how many cities had spring break, and now they don't have anymore. Just, that's the- Just, that's, that's a horrible negative side. And I participated in one of those, and I, I was totally disrespectful to the property, the hotel, whatever, I just, ah, Gary, you've been there, huh? So, no, no. Sorry, Ann. But I'm just saying, we're stupid, and so anyway, and there's a lot of money out there for people to spend today, so it's nothing for them to rent a house for a three-day weekend, but rent it for the whole week and just leave and tear the place up and leave. Disrespectful, that's all. So that's my points. Again, unbelievable team. I thank you all. I'm glad you had some dissent. Okay? It's important that you do, everybody can get along, and thank you all very much.
Go ahead, Dan, go ahead. I'm sorry.
Oh, sure. Unfortunately, I have all the answers. Put it down here. Get them in a minute. You know, the first thing I heard, first of all, let me say thank you to each and every one of you. I mean, the amount of time and effort that went into this presentation, the hearings, I'm amazed at how hard you worked, and Gary, I thank you also for your dissent. I mean, it just, I'm not sure it was a dissent. I think, you know, it's just more information that, you know, that we need to look at. The words I heard that I remember, started off, is it good or bad? That was your starting point. And we don't know, we still don't know. The other words I heard was process, enforcement, cost, arbitrary, capricious. They're all related. You know, in my mind, we talk about being visual. I really love Venn diagrams, I mean, that's one of my things, but, you know, you really could apply a Venn diagram. You have the universe of zoning enforcement, you have little circles of the beach communities that have their own zoning regulations, then you have a giant circle around all of it that is an ordinance. And, and so that's kind of my starting point of how I, I look at it. And we have to try to balance those tools in a way to satisfy the arbitrary and potential capriciousness of our, of what we decide on, and the way we guard against that is having an adequate process. And then as we talk about enforcement, you know, we've, we've spent a lot of time on the budget the last three months, and one of the things that becomes very apparent when you start getting down to the, you know, to the line items, is the cost of litigation and legal fees. And you can't have enforcement without the willingness of those, our taxpayers in the town to, to pay for that enforcement. So there is a give and a take between enforcement, how aggressive, whether it's going to be moderate or aggressive, there were, you know, three or four different levels of enforcement, how, how much are we willing to sign up for as a community? And given that, how does that affect our ability to regulate it? So what is the right level? And, and what is our goal? The other thing that I, I would want to point out is, you know, we were kind of on hold a little bit with the, is, how many, Whibley?
Whibley.
Whibley. With the Whibley decision. But what that did was, once the Supreme Court got it, was they go to appellate or Supreme?
It went to the, it went to Connecticut.
Went to State Supreme Court. So once it got to the Connecticut Supreme Court level, where now there was sort of a final decision on, on the interpretation of Whibley, what that did and what we're seeing is it spawned legislative initiatives, and we have a, the House bill that we were discussing, a Senate bill, and so we're still in this mercurial position where we don't know what the end result is. And where, you know, your committee was stymied by waiting for Whibley, I, I think we're going to be in that same position as now we try to reinterpret all this good information and good thinking. We're probably going to want to see what the legislature does, and we're also, I think, it's incumbent upon us to look at these other municipalities that have crafted and passed ordinances or zoning regulations, to look at the litigation that's, that's coming from, you know, being directed at those communities. So, you know, it's going to be a while, I think, before we can come up with a solution. I, I think it's a wonderful start, what you did, and now it's given us the information to try to move to the next, to the next phase of, of this. I want to say thank you again to everyone, and those are my comments.
Thank you for your comments and questions, and, you know, we won't belabor the point with specific answers to some of your questions. You know, that, I think a lot is, a lot of your answers are actually contained in this, in both reports, but especially this report. I'll just mention one thing about, about the definition of STRs to, to Mr. McKenzie's point. So that, the definition, 30 days and under, is what is generally accepted definition. It's also the Connecticut definition that you see repeatedly. You see it in the Public Act 24, 143. You see it, you know, throughout the, so you see it on the platforms, et cetera. So there's a, there's a consistency with that, but you can't conflate that, or confuse it, rather, with, you know, limiting, you know, having a number of days, you know, you can, you can do both.
I understand. I just wanted to, I just wanted to eliminate the three-day stag party, meaning that make it a week's rental, make it, make so many.
That is definitely one option. That is what Black Point has done with respect to its, its own zoning, so, you know, it's seven days or more, vacation rentals of at least seven days.
Was there where that?
Yes, yes. And if you want a quick summary of what each of the beach communities do, if you just, if you go to page 11, section 8, at the beginning of that, the second paragraph is a great summary. Paul gave some of that information. We're just trying to, you know, get you through everything, but that is the current state of being of the beach communities, whether it's zoning or just a bylaw or whatever. So, yeah, I just, and I just want to take a moment to thank my colleagues, all of them, you know, on the board. I think our only person missing is, Mr. Salino is missing, and I thank him for his efforts, great efforts by all. It was really a pleasure. And I did want to give a shout out to Brooke Stevens, who was our recording secretary. She, she's done a great job. But again, just, you know, I, I spoke to the planning person, Kathy Razika, over at in Preston, and I had a chat with her after they adopted some new zoning regulations, which I think you'd be very interested in to help protect residential communities, really a very creative approach. Hope it all works out for them, they did it last fall, but she said, you know, you may not get it right the first time. I mean, they have been through a few iterations, so, you know, whatever you decide, know that you can amend, you can change. It's, and especially a topic like this. Lastly, to Ms. Hardy's point about local, local establishments, traditional hotels, motels, et cetera. We have about eight of them in town, and so, you know, it's Mr. Mahalan's opinion that if the world of short-term rentals diminishes, you know, there will be more and more interest in, you know, you know, hotels, motels, and he's expressed that others have expressed interest in coming here for, for traditional lodging, to operate them. So just a, just a point on that. Okay, well, thanks so much for your time.
Thank you, Ann. Thank you so much again, everyone.
Thank you so much.
For the hard work.
Yeah.
Fascinating stuff. We have our work cut out for us, too, on this. Appointments to boards and commissioners, do we have any?
Yeah. Move to appoint Joyce Adams, 39, Upper Patagansett Road, Unit 31, Eastline, as an alternate member, tenant representative on the Fairback Commission for the Town of Eastline, with a term to expire on January 3, 2028.
I'll second.
We have a second. Okay. Any, any additional discussion on that appointment?
Well, I, my only concern is, I, I just don't know, she's a tenant and representative, is there, do we need a certain party for, like, minority representation, or is that already, we're good? Okay, just wanted to make sure.
Oh, good, good question. All right, then, if, nothing else? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? Okay, motion carries. Thank Joyce for wanting to serve. Is that the only one? Yep, that was the only appointment, tenor. We have to schedule the annual town meeting. Do I hear a motion?
Move the following. Notice is hereby given of the annual town meeting to be held on Monday, May 12, 2025, at the Eastline High School Auditorium at 7:00 PM to act on the following. One, to review and discuss the budget for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2025, as recommended by the Board of Finance. A, in accordance with chapter 7.3 of the Town Charter, the moderator shall adjourn the annual budget meeting to a referendum on the voting machines. The budget resolution will be submitted to the persons qualified to vote in a town meeting by referendum by machine vote, which referendum shall take place on May 22, 2025, at the Eastline Community Center from 8:00 AM to 8:00 PM. Two, to adopt a five-year capital plan. Three, to conduct such other business as may properly come before the meeting, dated at Eastline, Connecticut, the second day of April 2025, Eastline Board of Selectmen.
Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstaining? Motion carries. Okay, it's late, but are there executive reports?
I'm set.
Ann?
The only thing I had was on, trying to think what day, Tuesday, I just, with Dan, we attended the Emergency Management Symposium and attended different seminars. One we went to was like on cybersecurity, which I thought was really interesting. I went to another one on, like, active shooters, and then they had different things on, like, wildfires, and it was, it was a very interesting, informative, and a, and a good day. So I didn't have, I did also attend In the Wetlands, but I didn't really get any report on that.
Okay. Candace?
All right. Well, no committees, but I did attend a Miracle League event, which was wonderful fundraiser, and I attended the Smith Acres anniversary ribbon cutting last night, which was really nice.
Very nice.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's it.
All right, sorry, I missed that one. Don, London report, thank you. Okay.
Excuse me.
Let's see, executive for me. No, just that, it was really a great thing over at Camp that, yesterday, a lot of information. I went to the, to the breakout, was, you know, big disasters in the state of Connecticut, and they talked about some of the major storms, and the storm of the century was the day my daughter Sarah was born in 1993. Yeah, she came in in a blizzard, I guess, so. Yeah, so, okay, but that's that. First selectmen's report, I'll be brief, I just want to mention a couple of things. You know, again, our police and fire departments did a fantastic job. Last Friday, came in, got a lot of work done, and we ended up having a gas leak and we had to evacuate Flanders. Just amazing job by both our firefighters, the police, the ambulance service, they were all, they did the job right, they got people out of the buildings, they evaluated the buildings for gas inside, the police handled all the traffic, and it went so smoothly. I think we had 13 different entities showing up on mutual aid to help us out. So it went very smooth, they did a wonderful job. And then we made the news, was it Monday? Monday morning, some guy that was ramming cars on I-91 ended up getting onto 395, around a couple of state police cruisers, and it was our, our police officers that finally made the stop, did the pit move with the car, and stopped him and got him into custody and avoided any further danger to the public, so.
State police took all the credit, though.
What?
State police took all the credit, though.
Well, we're, I'm going to make sure everybody knows that our town police did a wonderful job on that, and they deserve the credit, and very proud of them. So that's that. Ann, we're still in the heat of the budget deliberations. That'll be going on for a while longer yet, and we'll see what happens. That's my report. Communications, we had a letter from the zoning official reporting that the annual compliance to Board of Selectmen in accordance with section nine of Public Act 2129, and we received another letter from the planning director reporting annual compliance to the Board of Selectmen in accordance with section nine of Public Act 2129 as well. So we're in good shape there. Any public comment? I don't see anyone, so there's no selectmen's response. Do I hear a motion to adjourn?
Move to adjourn the April 2, 2025, regular meeting minute of the Board of Selectmen at 9:26 PM.
Can I encourage anybody to second the motion?
Aye.
Thank you. Any discussion? All in favor of adjourning, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, being done? Motion carries. We stand adjourned.